I'd like to welcome you all to the May 18th, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now called to order. At this time, I ask you please stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy to come forward to introduce our special guest that we have attended with us on this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for joining us tonight at our school board meeting. We have the pleasure tonight to have Churchland Elementary School here presenting. And at this time, let me see, who's here from the administration? Hey, there's Dr. Jones and Mr. Truwater. If you all will come forward as I call the students. First, as I call the students' names, will you all come or you can come? Natalie? Yeah, Natalie Columbus, she'll be doing the pledge of allegiance. And Natalie, before she gets started, let me give you a little information about her. She's in the first grade at Churchland. She thinks Churchland is a good school. And at recess, she likes to, she likes when she can go to school and play cool games like Descendants. In her free time, she plays video games like My Singing Monsters, as well as to get her, as well as to get on her hoverboard. When Natalie grows up, she has a plan. She wants to travel to every country in North America and say, "I love you." She wants to say, "I love you" to everyone she meets, so she can help spread world peace. For a future career, she thinks video game development would be a good option. Now Natalie, if Natalie's parents, if you all were here, will you all please stand to be recognized? Next, during the school statement, we have Queen Sakura. Sakura. All right. Queen is in the sixth grade at Churchland. She was actually born in Indonesia and moved to Portsmouth in 2021. She credits a good friend she made at Churchland for helping her overcome her homesickness. She loves being at Churchland Elementary as a student, and she likes to read books, take walks, and play with her pet. In the future, Queen is considering becoming a doctor, a lawyer, or nurse because she likes to help people. Can Queen's family stand to be recognized at this time? Now, at this time, I will turn it over to the star. Natalie, I will turn it over to you at this time. Yeah, please come up.
Do I have to sing now? Good, good evening, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Patillo, the school board, and guests. Is everybody here? I hope they are. Well, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have to sing the Star Spangled Banner? I think I do. Exactly. Okay. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight over the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the pop's bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner that waved o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? This version of the Star Spangled Banner was
Stay right here.
Which was made to work
Good evening, everyone. My name is Queen Sukarna, and I'm a sixth grade student. Many schools have Churchland in their name. However, I attend THE Churchland Elementary School, home of the Tigers. I have been a Tiger since fifth grade, but I like CES because I have the best friends here. And my teachers really care, and they've taught me a lot. As a sixth grader, I have had the opportunity to serve as a safety patrol in my school, where I get to help students get to their classroom and home safely at the start and end of each day. In fact, I am the captain of the patrols, and I was chosen in fifth grade to be a patrol with some of my other friends who shows positive behavior. P.A.S. is part of our school-wide positive behavioral intervention and supports, also known as PBIS. P.A.S. is an acronym for P, Prepare for Success, A, Act Responsible, W, Work for Respect, and S, Show Self-Control. Mr. T, our U Assistant Principal is constantly reminding us to show self-control. And as a patrol, I get to remind students to show self-controls in the hallways. PBIS is really cool because each quarter, we celebrate our positive behavior. We had a dance and gift bags, and I had the best time dancing with my friends. And also, each classroom names a student of the quarter for the person that showed the best positive behavior. And I was the student of the quarter the second nine weeks. And then we celebrated at an assembly, and our parents were invited. And my mom was able to come, and she was so proud. Oh, and PBIS had a magician last month, and he was pretty funny and made a rabbit disappear. Oh, speaking of disappearing, we have learned about deforestation in science this year. Our forests are disappearing throughout the world. A lot of trees are being cut down, which is terrible for our environment, especially global warming. And to help, an organization called Neighborhood Forest gave us trees this year to plant at home and in our community. It feels good to help the environment and our community. And another way the students at THE Churchland Elementary helped the community this year is through our cereal box Domino challenge. All the classrooms competed to collect the most cereal boxes to donate to Mercy Chef, who feed mine, body, and soul into those in need in our Portsmouth community and around the world. Our parent and family engagement license, Mrs. Conkle, lined up all cereal boxes like a Domino's, then she knocked them down. It was awesome. And of course, the little kid especially thought it was cool. We collected almost 800 cereal boxes, and that means we collected as many cereal boxes as we have students at CES. And I bet you didn't know, so many students go to our school. Our principal, Dr. Jones, works really hard to make sure we have everything we need to learn and grow to be ready for middle school. And as a student at CES, I have learned that learning isn't always about math, reading, history, and science, though we do a lot of that, too. Learning can also be outside of our regular classrooms. We learn in art, music, physical education, and the library. And I like physical education and music the best because I feel really connected to music and movement. Our school counselors also teach us a lot about respect and how to better talk to each other to solve our problems. And one of the cool things some of my friends are involved in the outside of the classroom is learning how to play the violin. And in fact, today was their concert, and they did an outstanding job. And again, their parents were there to cheer them on. Oh, speaking of cheering, you should have heard the kindergartners cheer on our touchy-truck event during our career day. They sure did love seeing the firetruck and police vehicles and community helpers at the school. And my favorite part of Career Day was the martial arts presentation from Tiger Academy of Martial Arts. And they also did a kindness and kickboxing event on Zoom that focused on respect and like Mr. T, love is self-control. And Career Day made me think about what I want to do in the future. And I think that I'm going to grow to be either a doctor or a lawyer. And we had some other events for families on Zoom this year, too. In the winter, we bake sugar cookies for baking spirit brides. Who knew measuring for mat could taste so good? And, you know, we also had a social and emotional event for students and families and learned how to do tiger breath. And there have been a lot of fun events for different grade levels at THE Churchland Elementary. Of the second grade, learned about financial literacy with Bayport Credit Union. A kindergarten did the Paul's Pumpkin Patch in the fall. They planted pumpkins and got to take a home pumpkin to decorate as their favorite storybook character. And the books were provided to each student from the Portsmouth, Virginia chapter of The Links Incorporated. And this year, my school became a Purple Star School in honor of all the 135 military families we served. It was great to see all of the resources my friends who have parents in the military received throughout the year. In November, there was a military family lunch and learn, and in April, they had a bunch of activities to celebrate the month of the military child. And as everyone knows, it is S.O.L. season and not my favorite time of the year, you know. But we have been working hard to remain the top-performing school in Portsmouth. And I get really nervous, but we have been working in small groups, playing review games, and even had a pep rally where some of my friends did cheers to encourage us all to do our very best. And I'll be sad to see my time at CES end, but as a sixth grader, I am looking forward going to Kings Dominion with my teachers and classmates before we have our moving-on ceremony at the end of the year. And I can't believe I'll be in middle school next year, and I am pretty nervous about it, but I know that I can do it because of my time at THE Churchland Elementary School. And I want to thank my parents and my friends and teachers and also my principal for always supporting me, no matter how hard school can be sometimes. And once again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we have Ms. Boone. We have Ms. Boone. She has something to give to you, Queen. Queen Natalie. Thank you so much. Dr. Jones?
Good evening, Dr. Bracy and Dr. Reverend Cardale Patillo. I want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to just show you a little glimpse of what we do on a daily basis here at CES. The enthusiasm is here. I want everybody to know we are under control, as Natalie has stated. We have our P.A.S., but thank you so much, Mr. T. And I are elated that we were able to come to this meeting and present some of the great things that are going on at our school. So thank you to each and every one of you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5 is a school board mission statement. Ms. Boone?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6 is the attendance roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present. Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7 is consideration of the agenda for May 18th, 2023. I entertain a motion at this time.
Motion for approval, second.
Motion made by Ms. High, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. High?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Litterer?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1 and 4.2 is public comment for non-agenda items and board agenda items. Do we have any speakers at this time?
We have one speaker.
As part of the school division dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the school board of the City of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the school board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of the scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any form of resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect when addressing the board. Specifically, not individual personnel, students, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of the speaker comments can be left with the clerk of the board, and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens to public comment, the audience is asked to remain respectful of all speakers. And the speaker is Mr. William Horton.
Sorry. Winston Horton.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Hello?
Yes, good evening, sir.
All right. Yeah, I have three issues with Simonsdale Elementary. One is a car-for-hire that brings kids to school. LPR is what they're called. If you're familiar with Simonsdale, if you're coming from Elm, I mean, city park, you hang right, you go into the first driveway, takes you behind the school, then you got immediate left, parking lot over here, another immediate left, takes you back out to Clifford. This LPR pulls in, right, left, left, it wants to back up over 150 feet of a one-way. Sounds unsafe for children. You never know when a kid's going to dart out there. There's always a blind spot when you're backing up. Someone said the principal gave them permission to do this. I don't see how. It's unsafe. You're going to get complacent or whatever, and some kid's going to pay the price. Second one, I just found out today, two months ago, there was a knife at this school. I never heard nothing about it. A parent told me about it today. I let other parents know about it. Their jaw was dropped. Never heard nothing. Three, school buses blowing through stop signs, rolling stops, Elmhurst, Mamosa. I got it on video. Okay? The lady back over here, I got to give her another video of the people backing up on school property, so she can show y'all. Now, if there's nothing going on about it, I'll just go to Andy Fox, Wavy TV 10. We'll try to get some results there. The principal's blowing me off. Oh, and one more. Monday morning, lady drops her kid off. Little kid, grandson, tall kid, picking on him. She hollers. Grandkid comes back over. She hollers at the other kid. "Come here." He said, "You come over here." Well, he went over there to her. GD this and GD that. "I'll get my people on you, you N-word." And she's black, and she wants to call him the N-word. He walks away and he starts it again. That's when I got out of the truck. Didn't say anything, but if something had come down, I was going to be on that woman's side. So we go to the principal, the assistant principal. I ain't trying to look at you all the time. But anyway, go to the assistant principal. I'm sorry, honey. So anyway, yeah. So anyway, okay. So we're going to look at the videos, and we're going to get the kids down here. We'll find out what's going on. Well, here it is. Tomorrow's going to be Friday, today's Thursday. Well, the kid's still in school. Ain't heard nothing. He told that woman he'll beat her down. That's an assault charge right there. I'll let her know that today, too. She said, "I didn't know that could be assault." Yes, ma'am, it sure can. But the knife part was kicked under the rug. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any more speakers? Thank you. Agenda items 5.1 to 5.6 consent agenda items. I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. High. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Dr. High?
Yes.
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 Thank you so much. Agenda item 6.1 is monthly report curriculum instruction. Dr. De Vries.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo and Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members, and Dr. Bracy. Your school board packet this evening contains teaching and learning highlights across a variety of content areas in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. If you have any questions about any of the items, we have a lot of exciting upcoming events that we wanted to make you aware of. In the packet, please feel free to reach out to me. You know how to find me. This evening, I am joined by Dr. Prosperinta Calhoun, who is the senior supervisor of world languages and ESL. She will spotlight the engaging work around world languages that has been happening this year across our buildings. Dr. Calhoun?
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the school board, and Dr. Bracy. I'm honored to stand before you this evening to bid you greetings from our more than 2,000 students who currently take a language in Portsmouth Public Schools. We have this year a program at the elementary as well, which you have probably heard about at Brighton Elementary. We have about 120 students there taking Spanish in addition to our other students. As part of learning the language, culture is vitally important. Not only do they learn the words, they learn about the people, their habits, their preferences. And tonight, I have the pleasure of sharing just a small clip of some of the work that has been ongoing with our world languages department. Thank you.
I think it's important for everyone to learn another language because it's very important for everyone to feel included. I think diversity and being unique and change, everything is an open book and it's welcoming, so doing it should help everyone get along.
Our students have an opportunity to dive in, be it through a Cinco de Mayo history lesson, be it through a food activity, be it through an art-related activity.
The elementary age level Spanish is very basic. We welcome a lot of cultural dances, a lot of diverse forms of learning. This week, for example, we're learning about Puerto Rico.
Just studying the language doesn't give you the full picture. The language and culture, the customs of the people, the things that they've created, all of that ties in. And it's really doing yourself a disservice if you don't study the culture with the language.
We believe that everyone should have a place at the table for global citizenship and interculturality. Those are gifts that can be fostered in the world language classroom. We want the language instruction to become a piece that stays with them. So we want them to start on a language journey and continue for the rest of their lives.
There's also more job opportunities for people that know more languages, so it opens more opportunities in general. For me, I want to be a pilot, so I want to travel the world, obviously. I mean, going different places, you want to know what you're reading, you want to know what people are talking about.
Language and culture are actually all around us.
The chapter that my Latin III's are doing right now, we are going to be talking about weddings. And weddings for the Romans gave a lot of customs, like carrying the bride over the threshold, throwing rice as a sign of fertility, the marriage contract, wearing the ring on the third finger of the left hand. That comes from the Romans.
The fact that there's just so many different ways of communication and so many different like cultures, and you can really find out like the different origins of people just from the way they talk and the way that their languages were developed and how people spread out and how languages evolved, that just, it just makes you want to learn more.
At this time, I would like to be present in case there are any questions or clarifications that are needed.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Did we have any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Thomas?
Hi, Dr. Calhoun. Excellent job, as always. For the, I have a question just about the, I guess, curriculum requirements. Are our students required to take a certain amount of language once they get in high school, language courses?
Yes, actually, in particular for our students that are, because many of our students do matriculate to various colleges, they are required to have three classes, three levels in a language or two levels of each for the advanced diploma. But in general, we encourage all students to take a language, if not Spanish or French. Latin is a great choice because it helps them get ready for the SATs and acquire a better understanding of the roots of words in general.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to just add on, as I can always just, can't talk about enough, the need to expand language to the elementary level. Since you said the requirement is for an advanced degree to have two levels of language, currently we don't really offer full language until middle school. And I think that we can really expand our opportunities in Portsmouth with a full language immersion program. And I, again, hope that we can see that progress very, very soon. And I like what I see at Brighton Elementary School. I just would like a further expanded program. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 7.1, monthly report. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, sir. Good evening again. First in my report, I want
Thank you, sir. Good evening again. First in my report, I want to share another thank you to our amazing teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, but I want to extend that appreciation a little bit more tonight. We're so grateful for all that they are doing and have done for our children and our community. Some of our administrators helped me thank our teachers in a special video outlining what they do in a day. If you have a chance, visit our YouTube page to see it. And thank you to our school communities who shared their gratitude last week as well. Also, last week was our Nurses' Day. Again, thank you to this dedicated group of our team. Our nurses provide so many services to our schools and students, from scrapes and bruises to feeding tubes and breathing apparatuses. Our nurses meet the individual medical needs of all of our students. We thank you for your service to this division. This week officially launched our SOL testing. I'm sure some of you are parents, guardians, you know well, you know well what's going on with that. We're eager to see how our students will shine on these tests. Let me again thank our teachers, instructional specialists, coordinators, administrators, who have worked hard looking to support student learning in any way they can. Of course, I want to say to our students, you got this. We have no doubt that you'll do great, and you will continue to cheer on our students during this time. I shared this last year, but I also want to extend a special thank you to our research and testing office, as this is a crucial time for them, and they've been instrumental in supporting schools for all the logistics that come with testing. I want to make sure that my annual reminder for preschool and kindergarten registration, registration is underway. Had a chance to go over to Emily Spong yesterday to see our, for another program, and saw the parents enrolling students at that time. So if your child will be four years old on or before September 30th, and you meet the state eligibility criteria, you qualify for our free preschool program. Please make sure you don't miss out. You can apply now, and please note the application window will close on Tuesday, May 31st. More information can be found on ppsk12.us. Along those lines, online registration has also launched for our kindergarten families who will be starting their K-12 journeys with us this fall. Your child must be five-year-olds on or before September 30th to enroll for kindergarten, and there are a number of specific documents you will need to provide. So please visit ppsk12.us/kindergarten to get all the information you need to register your child today. Finally, as a calendar reminder, we have one last holiday before the school year comes to a close in June. All administrative offices will be closed Monday, May 29th for Memorial Day. And this time, Dr. Patillo, that will conclude my report.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda item seven point two is consideration of the founding school board operating budget for fiscal year 2324. Just want to reiterate, this budget will be voting on the General Assembly. They adjourn without passing a budget, so this budget is based on Governor Yonkin's budget that was submitted in December of 2022. This budget will include a 5% raise for all staff. It will also include an additional 5% for all auxiliary service employees that will include custodial services, building maintenance, warehouse, food services, and security officers as well. And this will also include 20 new part-time school security officers for our schools, among other board priorities. I'd like to publicly thank the city council for approving the full funded budget of $63 million, $671,284. And I publicly thank them at this time. And we do have Councilman Mark Hughes, who's our school board representative on the city council. I thank him for that. And at this time, if there are no more questions considering the budget, I would like to say also that if by chance, when they reconvene, and currently in the House, they do have different numbers for a higher percentage for raise, at that time, we'll have to come back together again and discuss what our options would be for addressing the budget changes. But at this time, I will entertain a motion at our current budget that we have presented.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Dr. Whitaker, second by Ms. Futrell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item seven point three, subcommittee reports. For budget and finance, you basically just received our report, which is the budget that we just passed. Do we have a report from our city council liaisons at this time? All right. I know we do have a report for technology operations, a brief report from Dr. Cotton.
Yes, I were, myself and Dr. Patillo were able to make a visit to Cradock Middle. Must say that I was very satisfied with the Go Tech room that was put together as a student there in the 80s, back when there was kind of like a shop type of area, to see what has been done there. It just really made me happy. So I'm just glad that we're able to move forward and get these things done for our young folk. So I look forward to the many things that we have coming down the pipe, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other board member reports at this time? Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, sir. We did have a curriculum and instruction meeting a week ago, a week and a half ago, somewhere around there. And it was a very lengthy curriculum and instruction meeting simply because of all the changes that are coming in with Virginia literacy, with the addition, is it, I don't, addition or expansion of English literature, of the English standards and the requirements that are coming from the state. I'm sure our curriculum and instruction team will have a further explanation of it with us. Part of the things we'll have to look at as we go through this is additional staffing for some of the additional testing and for some of the additional requirements that the state is putting with us. So I want to thank Dr. De Vries and her team for that presentation because it was very thorough, and I walked away feeling like I had an understanding of it, that I could explain it to somebody in an elevator pitch. And I think I've expanded my elevator pitch, and so I'm good with that. So we did have that meeting with that, and we also talked about the language immersion piece as well and what the plans are for that. We do have some concrete pieces that need to be in place before we can expand that a little bit more. So, but of course, that's gonna take some planning and some more discussion. So we asked for retreat for them to bring us a fuller scope and sequence for that. So, but we did have that meeting, and we have another one scheduled before the end of the school year as well. So curriculum instruction is busy getting their feet on the ground and putting their scopes and sequences together. And so for that, I couldn't be happier. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any other reports at this time? Any other reports? Thank you all again for coming. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much.